And oh. Going to call the meeting to order at seven oh seven. Okay, and we'll do a quick roll call. We have. Myself and Benfines will be chairing. We have Dan Murray, Nick Downs, John Johnson, Steve Penner. No one needs to be elevated because everybody's full members then, right? So. Do we have an acceptance of the agenda for the evening for Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I think Dan seconded it already.
Dan second. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye or wave of the hand. Okay, opposed? None? Okay, so the agenda is approved. We'll proceed with the minutes of the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. So I read through them, but I wasn't at the meeting. So I did ask Ty about the letter from the Saddle Ridge Association. So she's going to get us an update on that post-meeting. So.
I would also just ask that a small correction be made to page three. The second to last paragraph. The last sentence of that paragraph, it says, he did not feel this increase would not cause much harm. I think it's supposed to say it would not cause much harm. I don't know if it's supposed to be a double negative there.
He did not.
Oh, he did not feel this increase would cause much harm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we could just eliminate that not.
Did you get that?
I got it.
I would make a motion to accept these minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, I heard. The second was John?
Yep.
Or? Yep. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, we'll approve the minutes and we will recess the meeting and convene the hearing for application zero-two dash twenty-two. Paul and Angela. Help me out here.
Yegid.
Yegid.
Yegid. Of thirty-eight Davis Road, map sixteen, block twenty-three, lot five. They're looking for relief from section three-two-four-zero area and dimensional standards for the construction of a twelve-foot by twelve-foot study. Okay, so your packet had the Republican American notice that the legal notice was published as well as certified mail receipts from re-adjointing property owners. So Paul, would you like to tell us about the project?
Yeah, well, um, my wife and I fell in love with this house, house, old school house, a couple of years back. And it was in total disrepair. Uh, we spent a lot of time in making it in into a livable home and it's, um, I mean, we, we, we love it. We love it here. It's, uh, it's great for us. We're both retired now and, um, it's someplace that we want to be able to spend a lot more time and, and, and live here, you know, for as long as we can. Putting on a, uh, small study addition would just be make the house more livable. It'll just give us that little bit more space that we need. Little bit more storage, just, uh, you know, an area on the main floor that we could relax and not have to use the, uh, the loft as much, but, uh, um, we're we situating it in an area where it's, um, it's the furthest away. If you, if you, you know, saw the plan, it's the furthest area away from any of the setbacks. And, you know, i- if we had more, more property, more land, that would, it wouldn't be an issue. You know, but with the constraints because of the size of the lot, that's really our hardship and that's, uh, what we're looking for relief of.
Okay. All right. Um, just give us a moment to take a look here at the documents provided. So is the existing house one bedroom or two bedroom?
One.
One.
The septic system that was installed is a two-bedroom system. So we don't plan on using that for a bedroom, but in the future, if somebody else did convert that to a bedroom, it would still be manageable for the septic system.
Right.
What is the lot size? Uh, eighty-five feet square. So about a little over seven thousand square feet. Uh, yeah.
Town has it as point two acres.
Yes.
A little less than that.
Yeah.
That's correct.
What we don't have is a reference map that shows the location, the footprint of your house with the outbuilding that is on your property that I saw today.
Um, it's in the packet.
I think that's, is that the shed, Dan?
Yes, that's the shed.
Yeah. Where is that?
Where is the shed?
No, no, I'm looking, I, I see. I, I see a, a septic map.
Lower left corner of this page, Dan.
Uh, which page are you on? Which number?
I'm not sure which page that is, but it's the one that has the plot plan on it.
Okay, I don't have that. Huh.
Well.
Yeah, man.
I don't have the, I don't have the page number on this.
Yeah, I don't see page numbers, but.
Well, I have Agenda Items five-point-one and it says plans and when I, and then it only has three pages.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the full site plan either. When I go to plans, I only get three. It's like a kind of zoomed in.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't show the, uh.
I have a pull-up here on the, um, the Kent Town website for tonight's meeting and that's what I'm looking at right here on.
Maybe the shared, maybe the shared drive didn't have it.
There it is.
Okay, there it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Ty.
Oh, so it's on the septic plan. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That I don't have. The, um, the shed. Was that, was that a recent, uh, addition?
Uh, within probably the past year, year and a half.
And did that require a variance?
No, it did not.
What is the?
It, 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 it's a hundred square feet. It did not require a variance or a permit.
Okay.
Size. Okay.
Good.
We go, can you go back to that?
I'm glad Ty is good at this, like.
I'm just gonna, I just want to take, can you like zoom out? I want to just take a screenshot for myself. Or maybe I should just go to the town page.
Oh, there you go.
Nice.
Okay, so.
All right. I gotta, I gotta, I took a screenshot for myself.
Okay.
It'll wait, don't call it.
Okay, Ty, um, what is the allowable, uh, lot coverage?
Oh, that's my question. I don't have that in front of me. Um, um, I apologize. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I didn't look it up. Must be around ten percent.
That seems right.
But the existing is nine-point-six and the proposed is eleven-point-six, so we're talking about something in between those.
So that's part of the non-conformity.
Right.
All right.
It isn't on you, I mean, it's an unusual property, right? It was
Right.
A schoolhouse at one point. The town.
Yeah, it was built in the early nineteen twenties. It was, uh, granted while the Cora Davis was the original owner of the property who sold the town of Kent, the property, I believe it was for a dollar to build the schoolhouse, which it was for a number of years.
Does anyone else from the board have any questions before I hear from the audience?
So, so we're clear, we're, they're seeking a variance for setbacks for front and, and side yard setbacks, and it looks like we would also have to grant one for or for, um, lot coverage?
Yeah.
For the coverage of the principal building, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, the actual addition, does that conform to the setbacks for the lot? So am I just looking for the variance for the lot coverage?
I think it's a pre-existing. That's why.
It is pre-existing non-conforming and, and it has, it has, uh, additional problems with the front setback as well. Because you're adding to the non-conformity.
Yes.
So when you have a pre-existing non-conforming property, any alteration to that is considered to be increasing the non-conformity?
I understand that.
So. Um, and it looks like the right side property line, it would be four feet from, so that's definitely, yeah. Steve, did you get your question answered fully?
Well, it looks like he's meeting the side yard setback. It's sixty-one feet to the side yard.
On the left side, not the right side?
On the left side.
Right side is only four.
Well, yeah, but.
Well, that's to the existing building.
Yeah, that's to the existing.
It would be twenty-four to the addition.
Twenty-four to the addition, okay.
He's not, he's not, um, going towards that. I'm not sure how much he's going to be coming towards the front yard entirely. It looks like he has seventeen feet currently. And then this, this thing would be maybe twenty-three, twenty-four feet.
The, uh, to the front of the addition from the front property line would be uh, twenty-nine feet.
Twenty-nine.
Right, and so that's supposed to be ideally forty. So that's what I was saying. It, it meets, it doesn't meet the, the front, uh, setback.
Yeah, so it's the front setback that seems to be the issue here.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And then.
Right.
I'm just trying to find the lot.
And the coverage issue.
Yes.
Okay, a maximum coverage, ten percent. Okay.
Okay.
I'm still getting used to these new regulations. I'm used to the old ones.
Yeah.
All the building coverage.
Looking at the, uh, at the, the plan, uh, the, the drawing, the plan, uh, it looks like they, they set the proposed study back as far from the front lot line as they could and still have a door, you know, into the main part of the house.
Right.
The rest of that back corner stairs and bathroom.
Right. Did you want to, are you ready to hear from the adjoining property owner?
Yeah.
Okay, John and Kim, would you like to speak?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
First off.
State your address for us, please.
Five-five Seager Mountain Road.
Thank you.
First off, uh, we went to town hall and we reviewed all the documents. We can't find an actual drawing that makes sense. How many feet from our property line is the existing or the addition? We went to town hall, both places. Shouldn't there be a more graphic, uh, drawing? Something more explanatory? And who, who penned in those measurements? A surveyor? They look like they're just inked in. We have a septic plan, but it doesn't show all the property lines. And the applications filled out by the applicant write anything in there. So shouldn't there be a more thorough drawing?
Survey.
It seems to me. Also, it's a tiny building on a tiny footprint. And to add that decreases from the historical quality. And it's right above our septic. Their septic is right above our well. So adding a bedroom, I'm going to go on the assumption that loft could be a bedroom for grandchildren. Then you load up the other bedroom. The quality of the drinking water can't. You know what I mean? It's directly above the well. No one's giving any information, but they're pending in numbers. There should be a an organized drawing that can be legible.
A survey.
Available.
An official survey.
It's kind of important when it's right above our well.
So when you say right above your well, you're saying that it, it's the property sits up?
Yeah, they're uphill.
Elevation above, okay.
So water runs downhill, as we know. And you're adding bedrooms. And it's a small lot, a small house. Why mess with it?
Right.
Buy a bigger house if you want to. It makes me uncomfortable, even since they've moved in. I would like a water test. I would like to know how the quality of my water is. There was an old lady living there before that used minimal water. Now all of a sudden it's a
two-bedroom.
It just seems like putting a lot of things on a small postage stamp. And I'd like to see some real paperwork to show measurements and that's very vague. And I went to town hall for an hour and missed work and they couldn't.
Well, Ms. Kern, who's on this site, right? She's on, in the meeting. She knows, we, we were speaking to her this morning.
It's not like he's building a small deck. He's adding a bedroom.
And we couldn't find anything that showed us these setbacks and.
Yeah.
And neither could Ms. uh, Kern. Which I know she's part of this meeting, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So she'll tell you, we were there for, I was there for two hours. I even went to the town clerk's office to try and figure that out. Uh, Darlene Brady's office. Nobody seems to have any.
I don't like the idea of numbers penciled in. Who pencils them?
That, that was actually, so, so after I spoke with you this morning and we went over the file together, I did reach out to the applicant to, you know, do a more complete application. So we worked together to get better measurements on there. So that's my writing in conjunction with speaking with the applicant to get the best measurements possible for your survey. Um, to speak to the, the well and the septic, Kathy Weber of the Health Department did approve this plan back in June of two thousand twenty-two. And I think that's part of your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that your concern about the septic is not a concern because it was approved by the department.
I heard you.
Yeah.
And she has, um, measurements on that plan as well.
So how many feet is the gable end of his house and the new addition to our property line? How much of a, an acceptance, how much leeway does he want?
So I'm trying to.
Thirty feet.
Determine where your.
Looks like from your property line, uh, it'd be forty-four feet according to this uh, plan that we were shown tonight.
And when was the last time it was surveyed?
Last time it was, sorry, I didn't hear you.
When was the last time a surveyor assessed the property lines?
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I was gonna say probably had a transfer.
There's no paperwork for that.
Look for it today.
There's no receipt of payment or why is that funny?
Um, you'll have to address the, me as chair, please.
Oh. Okay, why does he think that's funny?
Honey. Let that.
I, I'm not sure that, um, if he, if the applicant had a survey done in conjunction with purchasing his property, it wouldn't necessarily need to be filed at town hall.
Okay. Okay, because we find it.
Yeah, he put a fence along the property line, assuming whatever. I don't know. No one ever asked us. So who knows? You know what I mean?
Right, so the you know, issues that have to do with um, the determination of the property line would, would not be the purview of this board in terms of the fence that exists or things.
Yeah.
I know that.
Yeah.
But I'd like to. Someone should talk to us when things like that are done.
Well, so the process for the, the appeal is that the property owners are notified, which I know we do have the certified receipt back that you were notified of um, the application that was pending and, and I think that's why you're here tonight. So you know, we're, we're hearing what you're saying and what your concerns are.
Okay. Well, I think the bottom line is, yeah, we're concerned because we feel like we sought out to try and find more information. And there doesn't seem to be any paperwork that shows us this. Um, so that's, that's a concern.
So the you're, I'm not sure what what paperwork is it that you're looking for specifically that you're not?
Wanted to know the.
We wanted to know how far the existing house is from our property line.
Right.
And then how far the side of his building will be from the property line. There's no, is it centered on his house or? There's no, it's very vague.
So the measurements that are on the, I guess it's the approved septic plan?
We saw that.
Okay.
But it doesn't.
There's nothing there.
Well.
There's something that was inked in today. We haven't seen.
Yeah, that happened after we left, yes.
Okay.
This is all we have here and I don't know if you can see this.
No, I don't have your.
It's just the septic plan that everyone else has.
Yeah.
Okay. And that has no measurements on it?
Doesn't show the shed.
It doesn't, it, why doesn't it show all three property lines? Like a professional.
Ours doesn't even show the shed is what we saw today. But Ms. Kern is saying that that was put in, you know, later today.
But no, I think the septic, the shed was al- already on the septic plan. Is that correct?
Not on what I have.
So Ty shared a screen earlier showing.
Yes, we didn't get.
We didn't get that. That was made today.
Um.
Let Ms. Kern tell us.
Yeah, that's no.
We don't, we didn't get that.
So was the shed entered on after the packet?
We don't know. Do we?
No, I'm, I'm asking, was that part of the?
So what I did after speaking with, um, the abutting neighbors today was, I, I did agree with them that the application and what had been presented, you know, is part of the packet in the office was lacking some information. So I reached out to the applicant and had the additional information that they were requesting, requesting added to that sketch. So it's really the original septic sketch that he submitted with a little bit of additional measurements on it.
Okay, but there are some measurements on that sketch in the plan that I have.
The original one did have some measurements. The, the second one has even more measurements as it pertains to the abutter's property because that was their main concern was how far it was going to be from their lines.
From their line.
So we were trying to make it very clear so they understood the distances were.
Well, we just saw that now.
Well, but the the plan that was on file already had the shed on it, had um, some measurements on it as well. You know, John held that up at the beginning. That's the one that was distributed to us um, as a board, uh, last week sometime.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so.
And this new one is now part of the public record as well. Everybody can view that also.
So that is now on the town website? Okay.
It's all there. Yep.
That, that just happened today.
Right, as a, as a result. Right, as a, as a result of our discussion.
Our discussion. Well.
So there's an enhanced version now, but what I'm saying is that even the original application did show the shed, it did show measurements to property lines. The enhanced version that is up there now shows specific to your property, calling that out more clearly.
I don't get that on the, uh, septic plan. That's the only map we have. And there's no shed. It just shows the, the new addition with the applicant's measurements.
Yeah, that's why we're confused.
Can, can you hold up yours again? You showed.
No, I think she's talking to the owner.
Oh, sorry, no, John Johnson, one of the board members. Has the map that was in the packet.
And how far it should be.
Well, the shed is, you know, on the left-hand side of the screen. I'm, I know it's, I don't expect you to be able to read the details, but my point was just to show that this was what was distributed to the committee um, last week. So. That is the document that's part of the packet that was already in existence, but I, you know, I understand that you were looking for some more information specific to how it um, is situated with regard to your property line specifically.
And there's, that printed every page.
Okay, Ty, you, I assume you scaled these out for measurements?
I, I took the measurements that the applicant, applicant gave me.
And did they scale closely? I didn't.
I, I think we should let Paul answer how he came up with his measurements.
The septic plan that you're looking at is a septic as built. That was all certified by the engineer. The measurements that we added there are knowing the size of the existing building. The setbacks, uh, uh, from the original A two survey that I had done before I bought the property. Um, and then adding the size of the building with the setback that was shown, giving the distance to the rear setback lines. And the side setback line.
So there is an A two survey?
Yes, there is.
The, does anyone from the board have any further questions? I'm not hearing any. So. Are we ready to?
There does seem to be a discrepancy on some of these, um, maps that are being presented.
Yeah.
The updated one showing a sixty-one foot, uh, setback and then there's another one that shows a forty-nine foot setback. Which I guess is the sixty-one minus twelve. Um, so there's, there's, does seem to be a little bit of conflicting, um, numbers on some of these maps.
The A two survey would probably be helpful to us to see.
And throw in a measurement to our well.
Her well would not be on the A two survey.
Yeah.
But there, but the septic drawing would have been reviewed to make sure that. Far enough away.
Yeah. Torrington area health district has already reviewed and approved.
No one asked us to come and measure.
So Torrington area health district would have, um, the locations of. Those. Items on your property as well.
Okay, we'll, we'll contact them.
That's Kathy Weber.
We all know how that goes.
Well.
Not we can.
I do think the cross their Ts and daughter Is that having that A two survey would.
Would, yeah, a, a legible plan.
Yep.
Something we can comprehend.
But as, but I want you to, just to manage the expectations that as a board, we can't rule on the septic viability or. That is the Torrington area health district and they have, have reviewed. So questions with regard to that would be, have to be addressed through that channel.
Well, we're just frustrated because we've looked at so many things that really don't make sense to us. And it has, uh, I'm sorry, his name was John. He was saying it just seems like there's discrepancies. That's confusing us.
Right. So.
Okay, just for the record, that was not me, but yeah.
That was who?
That was Steve and then, but John also had said that, um, having the A two survey.
Yeah. So, Anne, I'm thinking of moving that we, uh, what would, what's the official ZBA term? Recess the hearing?
Yeah.
Receive an A two survey?
So can we hold it open or do we have? Yeah.
You can hold it open.
Yep. So we can hold it open to receive additional information.
You can do that.
Would there be any other information that we want, Anne or board members? I, I think that would do it for me with, with setbacks on A two.
Right. Nick? You look like you wanted to say something.
We should look at it. Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. So. So we have to, um. So we're not going to close the hearing then. We're gonna recess the hearing. We're gonna hold it open to receive the additional information and continue it at the next.
Is there a historical society? It's a old schoolhouse.
There is a volunteer organization that is a historical society in Kent, but um, this is not in a a, a zone that it would require review.
Okay, sorry, Anne.
No, no, that's okay.
Yeah, we're, like I said, we're just trying to make sense of things that we haven't personally seen, so.
So, um, what the board is, is saying is that they want to receive additional information before making a decision, so.
Okay.
I move that we recess the here, the public hearing uh, until our next regular meeting, um, and, uh, and reception of an A two survey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nick Downs with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions? Rich, you're on mute. Thumbs up? Okay. All right, so, um. That adjourns that meeting for, or that hearing for this evening. Um, Paul, are you clear on, on what?
Yep.
We're doing, okay. So, um, you can provide that to Tay and, um, she'll circulate it to us.
Yes, I will.
Yeah. So, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim and John.
Thank you.
All right. Um, moving on. So where are we at? Oh. The next agenda item is the approval of the twenty twenty-three regular meeting schedule. So we have our standard dates. We don't meet in February, so we have January tenth, March fourteenth, April eleventh, May ninth, June thirteenth, July eleventh, August eighth, September twelfth, October tenth, November fourteenth and December twelfth.
Move to accept.
Second by John Johnson. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
My.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous vote on that and, um, we're elected officers again?
I like the ones we have.
So do we have a full slate of officers? Because I think this is what I ran into when I couldn't make the meeting in June. I thought I could roll it over to the next person and there was.
So I don't have, all I have is you as chairman on the list that I have inherited. Um, I don't have any vice chair. I don't have any secretary. I don't have any, any of that stuff, so.
Yeah, that's what I ran into.
Yeah, so.
The vice chair would take over and there was no vice chair. So.
I thought we had elected Dan, uh, Murray, the vice chair. I thought we had done that early on. Maybe you weren't there, Anne.
I don't know.
Does anybody else have that recollection or am I dreaming?
You can do it now.
You can do it now, though.
Are we electing them for the coming year? Sorry.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three?
So, um.
What are the duties of treasurer and secretary, um, on this board?
Steve, you could be chair if you'd like.
No. Not like that.
I mean, you, do we actually have to vote for a treasurer and a secretary?
I don't know that you would require one. I have to check your I laws if that's something, but a secretary sometimes would send out, you know, letters or something, you know, correspondence of some sort, but I, you guys don't really meet that often or need, I don't think it's needed, but a vice chair might be a good idea.
Yeah, our budget certainly doesn't call for a treasurer, um, and well, we don't correspond with anyone. Except for you.
Well, didn't, didn't, didn't Donna, wasn't she the secretary?
Well, she was the clerk.
She was the clerk, which is different.
Well, it says, it says clerk slash secretary on, on minutes.
Because, yeah.
That I have.
Cause she would perform that role as the clerk.
Right, and she, she may be coming back to do that as well, so, um, you know, it'll, it'll all fall into place, but that's not really a, an elected position. That's a paid position. It's not an officer.
I, I think we, I moved that we, uh, nom- I moved to nominate Dan Murray as the, uh, as the backup chair, the assistant chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
There we go.
Anne is the chairman, right?
Right, right. Thought that was quid pro quo, but yeah, I, I thought the purpose of this is that we need somebody to back up Anne. If, when she's out gallivanting.
It's a whole election of officers, but if you'll have me again, I'll do it again.
I'll second this, uh, slate of officers.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Hearing none? Welcome aboard, Dan.
I'm thinking about that.
Um, then communications, the monthly financials are there, July through August, I think. Is it? Right?
Yeah, that's all we have.
That's all we had, July through August.
Yeah.
Big budget, um. Yeah.
Nothing happening.
Nothing, yeah, zero percent, zero percent. Um, and the, um, Connecticut Federation of P and G, the quarterly newsletter was included for your delight in reading, so. All right. Anything else for the board?
I have, I have a question, uh, Ty. In the quarterly newsletter, um, uh, time limits on special except, exceptions, but our um, our approvals are not special exceptions, right?
No, I mean, some ZBAs do deal with special exceptions. Kent, Kent CBA is not given that power.
Right.
You will be, you will be having coming up soon a, um, a motor vehicle um, location approval, so that is still under your purview. I'm sure it doesn't come up often, but it's going to. Um, but that and variances for Kent, Kent CPA.
Okay.
What do you mean a motor vehicle approval?
We've done two motor vehicles, uh, Bull's Bridge and, uh, Kent, uh, Kent, uh, Berkshire Transformer location. We did both.
Oh, 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 for a repair facility.
Yes, exactly. It comes through the DMV down to you, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done actually three, Nick.
Oh, I'm surprised. I didn't realize.
What was the third? Uh, Bull's Bridge.
Old Chrysler or the old Chrysler.
That iron, iron horse or whatever it is? Yeah. That's my cat howling. It's not me. She apparently has decided the meeting is over. All right.
So are we meeting then in December on this matter?
December because we will have to issue a decision on the application that we.
Will we continue the hearing and then, right? Okay.
Yeah, and we'll reconvene that hearing, um, and have to make a decision at that time. So.
Okay.
What's that?
What'd you say, Nick?
I was talking about the suspense of it all.
So I just, you know, we hadn't met for so long and I missed you all. I thought we should do it twice, two months in a row. Now, I think, um, you know, we should have a little bit more official measurements before we issue a decision, so. It's all good. All right.
All right, let me just say. I am very happy to attend a meeting and not be running it. I like this. I move we adjourn.
All right. Some would say we don't need a motion for that, but.
Sounds good.
We have one.
But we have one. There we go. All right.
See you in a month, everybody.
See you in a month. Be well.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night.
Bye.
Hi, nice to have you here.
Here.
All right.
Bye, guys.